And make certain that the microphones are muted, otherwise we get feedback in here. Okay. All right. Ready to go, Jimmy? Okay. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, March 22, 2020, 2022. That's right now is 7:01 PM. Ms. Wyckoff, will you please call the roll? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, everybody.
Go for it.
I'm getting used to it. Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing the forum are council members Holter, Kenny, Andrew, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we are holding tonight's meeting in a hybrid format. What that means is that council members, as well as members of public and staff, are able to attend this meeting remotely or in person. And so, welcome, everybody. Also, for people who are listening in, please note, this is the first time that we've held a hybrid meeting like this since July. And so if you are experiencing any technical difficulties, please bear with us as we're learning technology and the new protocols and procedures. So, thank you. Also, Councilmember Davis contacted us earlier today indicating that he would not be able to be here this evening. So unless there's objection, we will consider his absence as excused. Is there any objection? All right. Saying none, we'll go ahead and move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilmember, please leave us. Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Councilmember Andrew. All right. Next item we have on the agenda, announcements and presentations is 2020 Audit Exit Conference from Ms. Hasser. Ms. Hasser, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, we should have in the audience with us Ms. Courtney Amundson and Christina Baylor and Miranda Shales, who are with our local audit team out of Mill Creek, who have completed our 2020 fiscal year audit. In front of you at your station, you will have a purple folder that has their draft exit conference in there for you along with the three exit items that they made recommendations on this year. But with that, I will turn it over to them so that they can take it to the audit. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And thank you, Becky, for the introduction. As Becky shared with you all today, my name is Christina Baylor, and I serve as an audit manager for one of our local offices of the Office of the Washington State Auditor. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening to share the most recent audit results for the city of Monroe. Joining me today is Courtney Amundson, who serves as the Assistant Audit Manager, who was tasked with supervising all of the work that went into the city's most recent audit, as well as Miranda Shales, who really did all the legwork that went into this audit and served as the audit lead. Miranda and Courtney will be joining me and sharing these results with you tonight. And if that works for everyone, we'll go ahead and try to share our screen to share our presentation. Oh, it looks like we do not have the ability to share our screen. Would that be able to be set up? Looks like while we are getting that set up, I did want to bring attention to the packet that Becky referenced. Everyone should have received a packet of information that will accompany tonight's presentation. Please know we won't be speaking directly from that packet, but we will reference a few key page numbers as you follow along. Please feel free to have that packet ready and let us know if you have any questions. And it looks like we now have the ability to share that. So, thank you so much. All right. Can everyone see our screen? Perfect.
Thank you.
Great. That's a great start. And can you hear me? Okay. That's a good.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Well, Willie will go ahead and jump right in. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to share the most recent results of the city of Monroe's audit. The fiscal year that we covered was fiscal year 2020, which might seem like a long time ago. We're now in 2022. Typically, this audit would be conducted before September 30, 2021, to meet the federal grant compliance deadline. However, due to the pandemic, the federal government allowed a six-month extension to complete these audits of the federal programs, which included a increased amount of funding related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So that is partially the reason why we are joining you tonight in March, as we did utilize that extension, working with the city to make sure that the correct conclusions were arrived at. So with that, we're going to go ahead and jump right into our first slide for you this evening. Before we share the specific result of the city of Monroe's audit, we'd like to take a moment to remind our audience a few key points about the the purpose of an audit and how that might assist members of city council, the mayor, and management as you continue to improve the city's operations. Number one, we hope that an audit will help increase trust in the city's operations. An audit is a great tool to help you know if there's any areas that the city can benefit from taking another look at, or whether or not everything is working as you intended. So it's a great double check and report out to you as to know how your city's operations are working. Secondly, we feel that audits that are conducted independently and made available directly to your citizens and stakeholders also really helps build trust in the community. The goal of the state auditor's office is to ensure that all of our audits of state and local governments are published directly on our website and made available directly to the citizens and stakeholders that really want to utilize those results and know how their governments are working for them. And then lastly, we know that an audit might result in recommendations. Please know that we do take great care to analyze and take a look at any of those items that might come up out of an audit to ensure that those recommendations are really designed to help the city improve its efficiency and effectiveness of your operations. With keeping that in mind, let's walk through the results of the city of Monroe's audit. Please know that we conducted three separate audits for the city, and Courtney is going to assist me in starting with our first audit results, which is the federal grant compliance audit. Courtney?
It's Christina. So as she mentioned, we conducted a federal grant compliance, or what we often call a single audit, for the period of January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020. And the objective of this audit is to determine whether the city material complied with the requirements of receiving requirements in place for the federal funding that was received. So we're pleased to report that we're issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the city's compliance with the federal grant requirements. And this is the opinion that you want to receive, and it provides assurance that the funds are expended in accordance with their intent and purpose, and that the requirements have largely been followed. But in addition, it is important to note that our audits are conducted in accordance with uniform guidance. And those standards require that we gain an understanding of the city's internal controls or process that it has to ensure that the federal grant requirements are followed. And then should we identify weakness or concern with that process that could, or in this case, did result in significant noncompliance that we are required to bring to your attention. And so those items are included in a finding that I'll be discussing shortly. But just for your reference, also, the report that I am referring to in your packet begins on page four. So that's where you can find it. So more specifically, talking about the federal program that we did select for testing, we looked at your coronavirus relief funds. And as you can see on the screen, that made up about 80%, so just over 80% of your total federal expenditures for fiscal year 2020. And so that's why we focused on that program, as it was new, and it was the majority of your federal funding. So again, as I mentioned, we did have one instance that resulted in a finding. And so we're going to go ahead and talk about that. And this is, the finding itself is on page nine through 13 of your reports. So we, in our process of reviewing the requirements in place for your federal program, we did identify some instances of material noncompliance and material weaknesses that are require us to issue this finding. And just so that you're familiar with it, this is our highest reporting level. It is included in the report itself. And it also includes the city's response, along with the finding itself, to clarify how the response is going to go. So to give a clarification, give an explanation on the finding, there are really two areas that we identified issues with, the first one being subrecipient monitoring, and the second one is for allowable costs. So to clarify, we basically looked through how the funds were spent. And if you, as you recall, this funding really came from a need at the time when the pandemic started, that there was funding that was provided to help deal with the financial need specific to the pandemic in place. And so the city was provided funding to determine essentially where they could provide assistance to the community. And it was really up to the city to determine how those funds were going to be issued and used. And so the city had essentially two ways that you went about issuing those funds. The first one was you passed funds on to a subrecipient and allowed them the opportunity to determine and decide where those funds were going to be spent, who it was going to be provided to in the process that was going to be in place, which is an allowable purpose. You're allowed to do that with those funds. However, whenever you were passing funding on to a subrecipient, you are required to then perform additional procedures and additional requirements to meet the federal compliance requirements with those funds. And that includes items such as, including in the contract, specific required items, as well as monitoring how those funds were then used. And so at the time when the city initially passed those funds on, it was determined that those funds were actually beneficiary and not actually passed on to a subrecipient. Through our discussion with Becky and her team, we did come to the conclusion together that, yes, those funds were, in fact, subrecipients and did require some additional procedures. The city did then go through the steps to perform some additional testing to verify that those funds were, in fact, used correctly. But since it was retroactive, that's where we still had to issue an instance of noncompliance, as well as a weakness in the process, because that was not identified at the time when the funding was initially used. So that was one part of the recommendation that we have, is just making sure that that is monitored, and any subrecipients are being monitored correctly. The second one is for, you'll notice this is for allowable costs. And this came from the fact that the city also issued business grants with these funds, which again is allowable. There isn't concern with that. But the city created an application that businesses had to apply with in order to receive those funds. And the granting agencies require that if there are specific requirements within that application, that there needs to be a process in place to verify and ensure that all of those requirements are being met. And so in our review of how the application was created, we found that, yes, there was an attestation in the application to state that the business had met those requirements, but there was not steps performed to verify that all of those requirements were met. And so you'll note that there is some question costs included in that finding on that very first page there. And that really just stemmed from the fact that there were those items that were not verified. Again, there wasn't so much concern with the use of the funds and how that process was in place. It was just making sure that there were actual steps to verify that was allowable and that all of those requirements were being met. So that's really the recommendation that has come out of this, is making sure that there is a process in place to verify and have that support for all of the items that were, all the requirements that were in place, that all those items are being maintained and met. So with that, we do have some new program in place called Tracker that allows the opportunity for the city to have some the opportunity to give updates on what process and what steps are being taken to address this finding. And so this is a new program that our office has in place that you can provide real-time feedback that is, can be seen by your constituents, so that they can see what steps are being taken to address this recommendation. And it also provides the opportunity for the city to kind of hold police markers to have reminders, essentially, when we come back and perform a review of this, to remind you what steps have been taken. And so we do encourage you to use Tracker. There is information in your packet about how to log in and use that program. And if you have questions for us about how to use it, please let us know. I, we have time at the end for questions. If there are any questions now, let me know before I move on to the financial statement portion of this audit.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Just a second. Are there any councilmembers that have any questions at this time? Go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
Thanks. Appreciate this. So I just, I got asked, because obviously, this is kind of a one-time, you know, occurrence, scumbling, we never have to deal with, you know, these type of funds being provided. Again, is this something consistent that you're finding in other audits of other cities? I just, I'm curious.
Yeah, we actually have found similar instances with this particular program. And given the circumstances that were involved and the, you know, the quick issuance of this funding and then the information that was provided essentially after the fact, or as you were starting to spend it, you know, those that received the funding were really put in a tough position to try to figure out what the best way is to handle it with not a ton of information. So we are seeing this come up quite often.
We're not an anomaly. We're kind of with the rest of the past. But I remember that there was, I think it's even listed in here, that there was a lot of timing that was associated, but that was always the hard part, we're trying to make decisions. And we didn't even have all of the information that's obtained on it from those that were writing the rules, that they knew exactly what we were supposed to do. So, okay.
Yeah. And I will say too, that, you know, in discussions with Becky, and again, with both Becky and the team involved, you know, your response is included in there and does basically speak to the fact that, yeah, at the time, you were doing the best that you could, given the circumstances. And we do recognize and appreciate that. I think it's just now having, you know, time away from it and really seeing the requirements in place. That's where, you know, this was a challenging grant, just given all of the circumstances involved. So.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from other councilmembers before they continue? All right. I see no other questions. Please go ahead and continue. Thank you.
All right. So we'll go ahead and move on to the financial statement audit. Again, this is for the same time period of January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020. The objective of financial statement audit is to issue an opinion as to whether the information included in the financial statements can be relied upon to make decisions. And we are pleased to report that we are issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on these financial statements. This is the opinion you want to receive, and it provides assurance that the financial statements are stated fairly and materially correct. It's also important to note that the city has elected to prepare its financial statements using the cash basis reporting. And this is authorized under the state of Washington through the Budgeting, Accounting, and Reporting System, or BARs manual. This method is utilized by the majority of local governments across the state due to its simplified reporting requirements and is allowable to use. However, national standards do require us to disclose in our report whether a local government chooses to report their financial statements under any reporting method other than US GAAP, which is a more comprehensive reporting model. And so as a result, we are required to issue a second or a dual adverse opinion, noting that the city has chosen to report, or has chosen, excuse me, not to report under US GAAP. There is no negative ramifications for doing so. It is just required by standards for us to know whether or not you did report in accordance with GAAP. And then additionally, it's important to note that our audits are conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. And these standards also require that we gain an understanding of the city's internal controls or the process it goes through to prepare the financial statements. And should we identify weakness or concern with that process that could or did result in significant errors in the financial statements, we would be required to bring those to your attention and include that information in our report. But again, we're pleased to report that we did not identify any concerns in the city's process and that we are required to bring to your attention. So again, this is exactly what you want to see in a report. So it's very clean. And then finally, we are required to consider whether or not the city was in compliance with any, with all laws, regulations, contracts, or grant agreements that if you were not in compliance, could that have an effect on the presentation of your financial statements? So again, you'll see in your report that we did not identify any instances of noncompliance that could lead to instances of presentation concerns in your financial statements. So again, that's exactly what you want to see for your financial statement report. So very clean financial statement. Financial statements, and your report will note that. In addition, there are some required items that we are required to let you know about. The first one is whether or not there are any uncorrected misstatements that were identified, which we have no uncorrected misstatements, which is great. We also noted no material misstatements, or really large errors on your financial statements that were corrected by management during the audit. So again, that's exactly what you want to see for your financial statement reports. A great job. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Miranda, who is going to talk about the accountability audit results.
Go ahead, Michelle. We're not able to hear you, Michelle.
So I don't think anybody can hear Miranda at the moment. So I'm actually going to jump in for her and just take over for that section. So for accountability, again, at same time period, this was for fiscal year 2020. And you will see, so our goal for an accountability audit is to take a look at the laws, regulations, contracts, agreements, and policies and procedures applicable to the city to ensure whether or not you are in compliance with those items. And then also take a look at whether, in general, the city has adequate controls and police to safeguard public funds. And so you'll see in the middle of the page, that highlighted spot in blue, that comes directly from the report that notes the fact that we found that the city was in compliance in all material respects with those applicable laws, regulations, policies, and procedures. So again, this is a very clean, clean report, clean accountability report. So great job to the city. Moving on to, more specifically, to the areas that we selected for testing. So during our audit procedures, the beginning of the audit, we perform planning procedures to determine really what's happened at the city during the period of time that we're reviewing. And so that includes reviewing items such as reviewing the minutes, talking to staff, performing risk assessments, analytical procedures. And once we have a better idea of kind of what's happened within the city, then we perform additional testing specific to those areas. And so the four areas that we selected this year for testing were accounts payable. We've looked at cost allocation, your cost allocation plan, excuse me, as well as open public meetings and financial condition. I'm going to focus primarily on the area that we probably spent the most, or we did spend the most time on, and that's accounts payable. So this one is where you spend the majority of your funding between that and payroll. That's really where the city spends the most of their funding. And so that's where we focused our time to really understand what process the city has in place to determine and ensure whether or not there are adequate procedures in place to ensure those funds are being used appropriately and they are supported. And so we perform just the overall understanding, as well as more specific testing over your general disbursements. We did some testing on credit cards, as well as travel expenditures, and electronic funds transfers and employee reimbursement. So we did a lot of focused testing on a variety of different formats or forms of payments to determine if there was adequate support. And we found that, again, very clean, we did not identify any major recommendations or concerns in that review. So again, wonderful job to the city for ensuring there is adequate support and there is a good review process in place. And we also took a look at your cost allocation plan. This is, again, a normal process that we look at from time to time to just understand what process you have over how your funds are being allocated, just to ensure that there is an equitable distribution of indirect costs. And again, we did not identify any major recommendations in that area as well. So again, overall, this is a very clean, clean audit, and again, exactly what you want to see in this audit. So, great job to the city. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Christina to wrap up the audit.
Thank you, Courtney. And just to wrap up our presentation, we have a few closing remarks to share with the city tonight. In relation to cost of the engagement, we did provide an estimate at the start of our audit. We're pleased to report that everything is on track with that original estimate. There was no need to revise that, even with allowing the city additional time to collect some documentation related to our federal grant. Your next audit is right around the corner. It is the summer of 2022, as we do expect the city to need another federal single audit for 2021. Please let us know if that is not the case as you're preparing your 2021 report. But if that is, we have provided an estimated cost for the next engagement, and that is included in your packet for your budgetary needs. In terms of next steps for the audit, our next steps will be to issue the city's report to meet the March 31 deadline. So we'll be quickly having this published on our website. If you have not already signed up to receive alerts when your report is published, you can do so following the link on our slide here, as well as in your packet. And you can also sign up to receive other news alerts or other reports that you might have interest in. It's a good way to stay connected to emerging issues out there. In terms of audit surveys, we always value and appreciate any feedback that you're willing to share with us on how we can better serve the city. Following the publication of the city's report, you will receive a link to provide feedback, and we encourage you to do so. Again, we just really appreciate any and all feedback you're willing to share with us. And I know we had some technical difficulties, and so I'm going to apologize here. Miranda would normally jump in here and say some kudos for working so closely with your staff. But Courtney and I will have to share this on her behalf. But please know this is coming directly from Miranda, as well as us. So I don't know, Courtney, would you like to share this for her?
Yeah. Miranda actually is messaging as well. But she would like to just convey, you know, the amount of time and effort that we did spend with the city to really work through, especially in the federal program. We do appreciate the, you know, collaboration essentially that we had, getting through and understanding the federal program especially. And so we wanted to thank Becky, as well as Kim and Rich, for all of the time that they spent helping to provide all of the information to us and really working through and explaining the process that you go through and the effort that the city makes to ensure that everything is done correctly. And given the remote environment, you know, this was a challenge in and of itself, as the first time doing everything remotely and having, receiving a single audit for the first time in several years. So we couldn't have asked for a smoother process. Really, we do appreciate the effort that was provided by the city to provide everything timely and work with us. So we just want to thank everybody.
And with that, that concludes our presentation for you this evening. We'd like to open it up at this time for any last remaining questions or any comments that you would like to share.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
A little more question, a comment that appreciates, you know, staff. I love, I always love hearing feedback like that, that we were good to work with as a city. And I'm not surprised by that. I feel like we have an outstanding financial team here. So just appreciate it and appreciate the review tonight. So I always like seeing unmodified opinion on an audit. That's always a great thing, is being on the finance committee for the last eight to 10 years, or whatever it is, it's always my favorite. Nice job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Any other comments or questions from councilmembers? All right. To your team at the SAO, thank you very much for all the work that you did, doing it remotely. You were able to get it done. And I appreciate the review. And to our staff, thank you very much for all the work that you did to facilitate this and keep us in a good place over the course of the reporting period. So thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. That item this evening will be the municipal report 2021 annual report with Judge Ness. So we'll go ahead and bring Judge Ness forward. And if we want to bring this daily board as well, Judge? And if you want to bring Ms. Daley forward as well, Judge.
Thank you. That would be great.
Great. Bring Ms. Daley forward as well.
Thank you. All right. And Ms. Wyckoff, I did have a slideshow PowerPoint prepared. If you can begin sharing that. Yeah, thank you. All right. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, I am Judge Jessica Ness. And I'm honored to be here tonight to present to you the 2021 annual report for the Monroe Municipal Court. I did submit an annual report that is included in your agenda packet. And tonight I'm going to highlight three areas for you. Next slide, please, Ms. Wyckoff. So first, I'm going to talk with you about COVID-19's impact on court proceedings and some of the positives that came out of COVID-19. Second, I'll update you on the new probation department program and our community court program. And then finally, I want to close with a few stories of ways in which the court has impacted people's lives in our community. Next slide, please. So first, COVID-19 had a continued impact on the court in 2021. In an effort to keep up with any case backlog from the previous year, we added additional calendars to address all of our criminal matters. Court specialist Shaleen Rosenbaum went above and beyond to keep us from getting a backlog of cases. Unlike most courts, I can report to you that there is no backlog of cases. I issued several emergency orders where jury trials were suspended. Jury trial suspensions were based on the number of COVID cases as reported from the Snohomish County Health District. Despite jury trials being suspended for most of the year, we were able to remain 100% open to our court participants and community. I will mention that there are a number of courts in our area that are still not fully open, or they have staff there at reduced hours. So I'm very thankful to the city for working with us and keeping us 100% open during 2021. So thank you, Mayor Thomas, facility staff, and the IT department. You can see from the court filings grid in your packet that the overall filings for 2021 are lower than they have been in years past. And it could be based on a number of factors. So COVID changes in case law as well as new legislation. We did hold over 3,100 hearings. And of those hearings, approximately 35% of them were conducted via Zoom in a virtual courtroom. So court participants log onto Zoom and enter into a virtual courtroom rather than physically coming to the courthouse building. And we found that there was a positive impact for individuals that could appear via Zoom rather than coming into the courthouse. So for example, with single parents in the past, single parents with young children at home would often truck to the courthouse, bringing their kids in tow with them. Sometimes they would have to wait an hour or more until their case could be called. But in the virtual courtroom, the single parent turns on their camera and their audio when their case is called, and we can handle the matter that way. We saw a similar benefit for people without transportation and also for people that may not have paid leave benefits. So we'll often see people logging in from a job site in a construction vest. It's great that they can maintain employment, work for a day's worth of wages, and then still meet their court obligations. So why that significant is that technology had not been used like this prior to COVID in the court system. So I have found it to be one of the positives that came out of COVID, and we will continue to utilize that technology to the benefit of our community. Next slide, please. So I'm going to move on to talk with you about the creation of the court's probation program. As you may remember, a probation program was a recommendation of the city-funded court assessment or study. And we received mid-year funding last year to create a program and hire a probation counselor. So we began a rigorous search for a probation counselor. And while there were many qualified applicants, we selected Brad Cotton as the court's probation counselor. He joined the Monroe Municipal Court Team on November 1st. And I've included a short bio of Brad's experience in your agenda packet if you want to read a little bit more about that. We did previously have our court administrator handling probation matters. And because of all of her administrative duties, it was challenging to properly monitor those individuals that were on probation. So with an established probation program, there's a lot more that we are doing. Probation holds offenders accountable and also offers assistance to offenders so that they can meet their court ordered obligations like treatment. Brad has a caseload of our more serious offenders that he regularly meets with, and he closely monitors them for compliance with treatment and other court ordered conditions. Next slide, please. Brad will also serve as the program coordinator for Monroe Municipal Community Court. In December, I came before you and requested your approval to accept grant funding in the amount of $158,779 to create a community court. Community court is a collaborative, problem-solving, and community-focused approach to respond to low-level quality-of-life type crimes. A community court links individuals with social service providers to address an individual's underlying needs. The program holds individuals accountable, but doing so in a compassionate way by providing them with much-needed services. We have been diligently working on establishing the community court. I created a policies and procedures manual. We've been meeting with the court stakeholders and service providers. And then the court team and I meet every week so that we can launch the program April 1st. I know that I am very excited about the program. And I know it will have a positive impact on people's lives. And I'm going to have some more updates for you later on in the year about the community court. Before I close, there are a few stories that I wanted to share with you about how the court positively impacted people's lives last year. We had an unprecedented number of offenders who worked a treatment program and who are now living a clean and sober lifestyle. So one such individual had 27 low-level quality-of-life type crimes that he committed during a three-year time period. The court, police department, and attorneys worked together to get him into inpatient treatment. Once that was completed, he moved into clean and sober housing and began an outpatient treatment program. The last time I saw him, he was doing extremely well. He'd actually ruined all of his teeth through chronic drug usage. And so he was excited to share with me that he would be getting a new set of teeth. There was another offender whom I'd heard would dig numerous large holes in the parks in the city of Monroe when he was high. And so it created a lot of extra work for the Parks Department to assess and then fix the damage that he had done. I released him from the Snohomish County Jail so that he could go to inpatient treatment, and he is now clean and sober, reconnected with his family, and fully employed. And then one last story that I want to share with you, it's from Sherry Simonson from the city, and she will often take court payments at our front window, even though we do have an online portal to do that. So one offender's father, he would stop every month to draw off his son's check for payment of his fines. And the last time that he was there to bring the last check in, he said that his son had really wanted to be the one that delivered the check, but because he works six days a week, he was unable to do so. And he's also clean and sober. And Sherry told me that as he handed her the last check, he said, please tell Judge Ness, thank you. I know she saved my son's life. These are examples of ways in which the court and the court stakeholders and the police department department have partnered with drug-addicted individuals to get them the help that they need. I believe it was their motivation and their desire to change that saved their lives. So these examples remind me of the starfish fable. And I'm just going to close with this last story. It's a story about a man who was walking along the beach and spotted a girl who appeared to be reaching down to the shore, picking something up and tossing it into the ocean. The old man approached her and asked her, what are you doing? And she explained that the sun was coming up, the tide was going out, and if she didn't throw the starfish back in the water, they would die. The old man exclaimed that there were miles of fish and that she couldn't possibly make a difference. And at this, the young girl bent down, picked up another starfish, and threw it into the ocean, telling the old man, well, it made a difference for that one. So like the ending of the starfish fable, I know that Monroe Municipal Court is making a difference in our community, one person at a time. Honorable Mayor, City Council, I am thankful for your support. And I am honored to be working alongside of you in Monroe's city government. So thank you. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you very much, Judge Ness. Council members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? One moment. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge Ness. Really appreciate your report and your inspirational stories. And it's a great reminder for all of us and our residents as to why we should contain a fund of this program. I'm very, very proud of the way that our city has done this and continues to do this. I know we just renewed it just a couple months ago. Really appreciate your report and your staff. Thank you. Please pass on to your staff our appreciation and our thanks for the difference that they're making in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Judge Ness, go ahead, Council member Campbell.
I was just going to echo some of the comments that Council member Hanford said, and you know, I know that there's one of those ones that it's been several years now and you're more effective, Judge, and just to watch how this has grown. This is one of the things I look back on. I think, you know, I think we got that one right. And we are making, you know, a difference. You know, it started as you know, with the county going kind of a change of direction and us pulling it, you know, in-house. And then now it's, it's really serving an additional purpose, especially with what we have faced in society with our, our drug problem, which creates homeless problem. I mean, every different study and whether we're looking at the homeless advisory committee, but we, we started it all. Having this as a resource as a city is a significant part of our strategy. So I just thank all the work that you guys are doing and you do it in that little room. We had a tour of that little room finance committee here last week. So great work on that. We're going to try to work on that, too. So just appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you. You are making the difference.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any of the council members? All right, Judge Ness, I appreciate our lovely conversations and getting the updates that you're, you provide to me, and I appreciate all the work that you and Sally and your other staff are doing. So thank you very much. And thank you for your report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas.
Great. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda then this evening. That's item number five, public comments. Out of number five, public comments, this is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to saving roads, any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. You are participating this evening remotely and would like to speak to the council, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand. That would be the little hand icon of the little Zoom screen down at the bottom. You can also hit star and eye here on the television. And if you're here and would like to give a public comment this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand. I see a handshake. So thank you. And I don't see any hands going up on the attendees list, so we will go ahead and move on now to the consent agenda, council. Council member Fisher. I'm sorry, council member Starmer.
Yeah, I move to accept the consent agenda.
And for the second, I understand the motion to approve the consent agenda, Council member Starmer. A second from Council member Hanford. I use a special one, but saying none will move to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, motion passes, six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. We're now at item number seven. Seven point one, Snohomish County Conservation Futures Grant Award and Interlocal Agreement Venture Pacific Property Land Acquisition with Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, go ahead and hit your microphone. And please go ahead.
Thank you.
Actually, Mayor Thomas, Ms. Darrow will be presenting this time. I'm sorry. We'll bring Ms. Darrow over. And Ms. Darrow, it looks like we're looking through tape for, for a wall. It's painted. Are you there?
There we go.
There you go.
I apologize.
Good evening, Ms. Darrow. You have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Megan Darrow. For those of you I have not met, I am the Surface Water Program Analyst for the city. I am here tonight to request that city council approve grant funding awarded to the city for the acquisition of the Venture Pacific property site. As well as the request that the interlocal agreement included in my agenda packet be authorized for signature, allowing the city to move forward with negotiations for the Venture Pacific property site purchase. In October of 2020, the city was approached by site owners requesting that the city consider purchasing the property for conservation purposes. The site owner requested $195,000 for the property. Staff were directed to seek out funding following a city council meeting in April of 2021. The property is adjacent to three conservation parcels that the city currently owns. Acquisition of the Venture Pacific property site would enable city staff to access all four parcels for future habitat enhancement projects and site maintenance. In September of 2021, the city was awarded $215,700 through the Snohomish County Conservation Futures Grant Program. And a $39,000 match was budgeted by the city. The Venture Pacific property site and the three city-owned conservation parcels house three fish-bearing streams. An acquisition of the site would enable the city to go after additional grant funding aimed at habitat restoration and passive recreational opportunities on the properties. That includes, concludes my presentation. May I answer any questions?
Thank you. Council member, do you have any questions? Okay, any questions? And go ahead, Council member Kenny.
I move to accept Snohomish County Conservation Futures Grant Funding awarded to the city for the acquisition of the Venture Pacific property site. Authorize mayor pro tem to execute interlocal agency agreement with Snohomish County, allowing the city to move forward with negotiations for the Venture Pacific property site. Expressly authorize further minor revisions to the interlocal agency agreement to the extent deemed necessary or appropriate.
I have a motion from Council member Kenny and second from Council member Culture for the request to action on Agenda Bill seven point one, new business is shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none will move to vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Extentions, motion passes, six zero. Thank you. And thank you for the report, Miss Darrow. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that item would be council member reports. We'll go ahead and start off on the end with council member Starmer, not council member Kenny. Council member Starmer, go ahead.
Just had a meeting last Tuesday, finance committee. Had a walk-through through the city hall and police department to make an appearance while we're trying to upgrade our facility or our home here and fully support that. Great presentation from Ms. Pastor on how we might be able to do it. Great presentation from Ms. Pastor on how we might be able to do it. Time of appearance, figured words without thank you.
Thank you very much, council member Carver. Council member Kenny?
I'd like to let the mayor and council know that this Sunday, Monroe Historical Society is hosting our annual membership meeting elections and an open house. So if any of you have not been to our museum, right across from 711, it goes down in East Main. Highly encourage you to come in and learn a little bit about Monroe. We have all sorts of great exhibits down there. We also have big tours of the upstairs Old City Hall, which was the city's recovery. We're renovating that space and looking for grant money and would love to have you come up and take a look at it. We've been working really hard and would love to see some of you if you're free on Sunday afternoon. From one to three.
Thank you, council member Kenny.
Thank you.
Council member Fisher.
I have a delegate for you.
Thank you, council member Collier.
I attended the Community Human Services Advisory Board meeting the other night. So they will be filling it for the HRT group and they wanted to give their recommendations. So I'm just really hardworking for the people. It's interesting needing to be part of it and
Thank you, council member Collier. Council member Hanford?
Thank you. So I just wanted to echo council member Campbell's comments about thanking staff for their work with the audit. And I know that's, it takes a lot of time and it's very thorough. So thank you. It's great to hear your support. And just appreciate my long meeting here tonight. It's great to be back in person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And council member Hanford pointed out to me by pushing his button and looking at his sort of reminder that even if I call you, please go ahead and hit your microphone and I completely forgot about that. So thank you. All right, council member Campbell, go ahead. And wait until your light turns a solid red. Thank you. Go ahead.
That's because he's a reason. So yeah, to echo Kirk, we had a finance committee meeting last Tuesday. I'm actually really excited about that meeting. Just there's a lot of good stuff from a financial perspective, in my opinion, where we're at foundation wise, all the work that has been done. And then obviously we have a very good steward of that. And now we have a new manager and I'm excited because, you know, for those of involved in the process of, hey, we probably about growing our facility. And there's definitely some maintenance concerns where it's, it's starting to be like a putting good money up bad and continuing to fix. And we've done all kinds of studies and all that type of stuff. What I'm so excited about is that, you know, the charter then, well, hey, we want to do something, but we want to live within our means. And then for reminders, for, you know, some of them, we've looked at everything, right? We've looked at public, you know, private schools and all that kind of stuff. And I think the plan that you're gonna send and see that's gonna be brought forward, you're gonna be very happy with from the standpoint of taking all the input that has been given. And then I think the other piece, which has always been really important to me, which is live within your means. And that is definitely something that Becky and team has put together. It is a proposal that absolutely lives within our means, but gives the city, you know, a home for the future. So I'm excited about it. I'm excited for the next steps of that phase or sticker phases with it. So it was, it was really cool to see. And yes, pictures aren't a thousand, whereas the tour was great. I mean, I toured this facility a bit at times, but it's always a, you know, a good reminder. And we, we definitely have gotten the max use of our facility here. And for those that haven't done it in a while, I strongly encourage you to check out the offices for people that were probably inside from one. So it's, I'm excited about it. So I'm excited about where we're at and where we're, we're gonna be going. So nice job and that will be coming to council when?
April fifth.
April fifth. So don't miss that one. It'll be a good one. Don't miss April fifth. And then the only other thing that I had was just a reminder, the Monroe Public School Foundation Auction, if you're still applying, is this weekend. So the live, the online auction opens Friday, March 25th at 10:00 in the morning. And then it closes on March 27th at 2:00 PM. There's a live pre-portion, you can check all the live stuff from, that's on Saturday, March 26th, starting at 7:00 PM. And may recognize the auctioneer. So just leave it at that. And all of the money that is raised for the auction goes to Monroe Public School. Monroe Public School kids and staff and grants and all that type of stuff. So anyway, there you go.
All right. Thank you very much, council member Campbell. All right, we are now going to go on to staff department reports. We'll start off with, with the 2022 Finance Department Report. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, the report is in your pocket to be reviewed at your leisure. It is still too early in the year to do any type of real trending analysis. However, given that we had the exit interview this, the exit conference this evening with the auditor, I did want to point out that in the packet or in the finance report, and we started this last month as well, we are giving you an update each month on where we were at with the ARPA funds. That too is a federal, federal program that will compel us to have a single audit again this year. But with lessons learned from the CARES Act, we are being much more deliberative as we are executing contracts. It is on a reimbursement basis so that we can review all expenses to ensure that not only are the costs allowable, but they are spent in the manner that the board E said it was going to be spent. And you will notice in the matrix that is attached, there are some contracts still have not been executed. We are working with those awardees to make sure that they do meet all federal compliance before it moves forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. And if there's any questions?
Thank you very much, Judge Asser. Any questions from Judge Asser? All right, saying none, we'll move on to the HR IT February 2022 Department Report with Title Christian.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much. So I have just a couple of brief reports for you to this evening. We continue to recruit, hire, interview, and extend offers to candidates. And no matter how many times we do it, it feels like we always have jobs open. A couple of key ones that we have right now are city engineer and park supervisor. We also have several positions that are open for our seasonals in both the public works and parks department, and then a few interns across the city. As always, I'd like to give a shout out to all of my colleagues that have served the city and our community for such a long period of time. March is a very big month for us to hire people. As you will see in the packet, there are several people on there, but along with everyone on there, and thank you for all their work, we have Mr. Jason Sutter that has 25 years with us. And then we also have Mr. John Landy, Ms. Joy Petrick, Mr. John Axman, Mr. Nate Erman, Mr. Brian Olson, and Mr. Scott Barr, who have all been with the city for over 20 years now. So very much thankful for their service. Moving forward and keeping with that spirit of hiring people in March, we will, we were able to onboard two people this month. Kate is rejoining the city after some time spent. She comes mostly recently from Marysville, and she is our new planning manager. And also McKenna Olson, who will be joining us in the Parks Department as our new Parks Administrative Assistant. So we're really excited to have them onboard. Moving to IT, we are also, and this is a little bit of a bridge between HR, we continue to work with recruiting firms to fill our gap of help desk that recently was no longer able to work with us. So hopefully, next time I come back, we will have someone in that position. And I've mentioned this project several times, but our finance software, Springbrook, we continue to upgrade. The cut over to the cloud should happen on March 28th. That is kind of a multi-day process. And then I expect there obviously to be some, some checklist items that we need to take care of. And then shortly after that, we will begin on phase two of that project. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from Mr. Christian? And then we'll go ahead and move on to the next one, and that is our Police Department Report with Chief Jones. So we'll bring him forward into the panel. Good evening, Chief Jones. You've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report is included in your packet. I would just like to point out a couple of items. The, on the first page, item number three, you'll see that one of our officers had a save with providing an individual who had overdosed medication to bring that person back to life. And it was kind of a interesting dynamic in that this particular person had assaulted that officer and other officers over the course of the previous few years. And despite that, we do what we do most often, and that serve the community and help people out and provide a valuable resource. So I wanted to commend Officer Michelle for that and her diligent work. And secondarily, you'll also see some of our statistics are coming back to normal is we are emerging from the COVID pandemic. We're starting to assimilate back into a normal lifestyle and our statistics are beginning to reflect that. So you'll notice those in your packet. And I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Keep telling me. Are there any questions? Please tell me. I don't see any. Thank you very much for the report this evening, Chief.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and move on to Human Services Work Report? Oh, I'm sorry. I already crossed off CP. So Community Development Reports, Mr. Chrisel, you're in the panel. So go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the, the time tonight. You've already got my report in front of you, but two items that I did want to bring attention to. One is Mr. Christian had just mentioned that we are fully staffed in community development right now. So a big shout out to them and all the hard work that they've done to get us there. Again, it's not that way for every department. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna enjoy this high on the roller coaster while I can. So thank you for that. And that is with the planning manager, Kate Turtolo. The second one I wanted to kind of bring attention to is with COVID, as we all know, a lot of ridership and just people are not going out. And that has affected our Monroe to Duval shuttle. It, it generally takes a number of people from Duval to Monroe and back, but right now it is currently suspended due to some staffing shortages. So if you know of anybody would like to volunteer, well, it's not really volunteer, but join that program and become one of the drivers, please reach out to me and I can make sure that they get to the right person. With that, that concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chrisel. Are there any questions for Mr. Chrisel on the seat of the report? All right. I see none. Thank you for the report this evening. All right, Human Services Report.
Thank you.
Council, council member Campbell, go ahead.
I'm just trying to, oh, sorry. I'm trying to remember though, on the contract that we have with the shuttle bus, there was excellent, was it all grant or there are some that we didn't?
Ms. Asser, go ahead.
We do have committed in the budget $5,000 towards the health of supporting that program. That's just a drop of the bucket. However, we wait for them to invoice us. So if they're currently not operating, there wouldn't be any expenses at the moment.
Okay, that's basically what my question is, is we still realizing expenses when there's no service. I figured, no, but I'm sure.
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, well, maybe, yeah, we can just check. Five grand, not much, but okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for the human? All right, Human Services Report, wait a minute, it's night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report for tonight, it just is a quick recap of some of the information that's been provided to the board over the last couple of meetings. So the board heard presentations from our community development department on the 2024 comprehensive plan update with emphasis on the housing element and from Police Chief Jeff Jolly on community outreach team and recent police legislation. The Community Human Service Advisory Board Chair James Harrigan partnered with Homes and Hope Community Land Trust present information for a community forum on how community land trusts preserve affordable housing. And then finally, one of the biggest highlights for the month was February is the point in time count. And those point in time counts were postponed during COVID. But Take the Next Step led the point in time count for East Snohomish County. They did an outstanding job. They hosted volunteer information sessions and a morning and afternoon shift for volunteers to go out and interviews, interview unhoused individuals. The full report will be available through Snohomish County at the end of May. So we'll provide the council with more information about the point of time count for 2022 later in the year. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this night on the Human Services Report? All right, staying up, go ahead and move on to the mayor administrative reports. Start off with 10.21, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda. This is
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder for the city council that the council's workshop and retreat will be a tour of the wastewater treatment plant on the 29th. That will start at 5:00 PM and council members can meet at the plant just located on Sam Street. Moving on then to April 5th, we will be having a public safety committee meeting that night. We've got a community court update, a legislative update, and then the tour of city hall, if you haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. And then the city council's regular study session, we're gonna be looking at big picture strategic issues. And those include the update to the city's strategic plan based upon the new Magic Monroe Vision Statement. A discussion of biannual budgets with Ms. Hassert, municipal campus funding with Ms. Hassert, Mr. Roberts and Mr. Farrell. And then ownership transfer of the Monroe Youth Activities Building presented by Mr. Roberts. Then finally, on April 12th, we will be having a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. That will also include a tour of city hall. So by that point, I think everybody will have toured city hall maybe once or twice. And then looking on the consent agenda, we've got acceptance of utility easements with Mr. Kathman and ownership transfer of the Monroe Youth Activities Building. And then promotional testing services through public safety testing. And then a couple of memorandums of understanding or MOUs for bargaining contracts with the sergeants and supervisors. And that's it. We'll be forwarding to the next couple of meetings.
Thank you. Any questions on the extended agenda? Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know whether I can make it at five on the 29th. I've just, I've gone a couple of weeks over the wastewater here. I'm just wondering if you think it's drastically changed or I don't want to miss out.
I think there are some things that are, that have changed and that are going to be changing, but I'll let Mr. Roberts fill you in on those details.
Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Waiting. That's maybe, sorry. There's a little less. There have been some construction projects at the treatment plant since the last time you were there. I don't know what year that was. So it could be that there have been a lot or a few. It still does the same things. It does them a little differently. I would think that if you're looking for bang, figure, bog, maybe after we get done with the next couple of big CIPs, it would be worth a revisit. There'll be some very different equipment here in the future. The whole facility will actually look different from the face.
If I can make it out of the
Anything, any other questions?
I did have one more item for the extended agenda and currently on April 26th, the P3 committee meeting is a discussion of the Amtrak stop in Monroe. But there's been a request to change that out for a transportation benefit district meeting. This is part of your annual meeting. Anything else, Judge Asser, if you wanted to share? We are required to do annual reports to the TBD, a public annual report, and we're starting to run out of Tuesdays. So public, the public works director, although I do apologize, if you checked with the parks director or the community development director, did graciously offer us that evening to be able to do that report to you. So we would be going over last year's financial. Where we ended last year financially, as well as Mr. Roberts and Mr. Peterson will give you a report on all the projects that were not only completed during 2021, but they are planning on giving you a history of projects that have been completed with the Transportation Benefit District money. So please put it on your calendar, 6:00 PM, April 26th.
All right, thank you. Council member Fisher, who is actually council member Starbury.
Yeah, I have his name, I have his 26th. It was the P3 group of committee that thought about the Amtrak stop in Monroe.
That would have to be postponed, Mr. Starbury, until the following meeting in May.
Is there any objection to swapping? Is there any objection to swapping out the P3 for TBD? Okay, so it sounds like we're good to go with the TDD. Thank you. All right. Uh, anything else on the extended agenda from councilmembers or staff? All right, this is.
Uh, that's all I have for the extended agenda.
City Administrator.
Next one is city administrators. Good. A lot of that showed up well with a white font or whatever something like that. Uh, the updates, I just wanted to bring to council's attention, if you haven't already seen the new and updated photos of council in the lobby. So a big thank you to our clerk, Jody Wyckoff, and our planning, I can't remember, planner, thank you, I should just say planner, Amy Bright, uh, for taking those photos. I thought they turned out very well. So I appreciate the work that was put into that. Rich Sheeker, I think, also worked to um, help get the pictures up into the lobby along with our facilities team that's been doing a phenomenal job with, I'm just trying to keep things updated around the city hall. So a big thanks to the great team effort to get those pictures. They're also up on the website and up in Monroe this week, so they have been kind of distributed uh, throughout the community.
Before you continue, Councilmember Campbell?
No, I just wanted to make up those comments and I, whoever did the airbrushing online.
Those pictures aren't taking long.
He's ready to fight about this.
Yeah. Fuck them. See, he needs a bill.
I wasn't serving a lot of road rage.
Yeah, she doesn't get road rage.
Miss Bright is available for services. Councilmember Hamper?
In all seriousness, can you please uh, email us all our pictures? So we can use them for.
All right, thank you. Uh, we will forward your pictures to you. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on those?
Thank you. Gosh, it feels good to all be back together again. So the only other item I wanted to bring to council's attention and council member culture mentioned this in her update is just the work that the Community Human Service Advisory Board has been doing. And one of the discussions that they had at a recent meeting was with MJ Burrell, who is the Director for Snohomish County Human Services Division, and Alessandra Durham from the Executives Office. And they presented information on the work, the regional work that's going to get started. Councilmember Culture is going to be representing the city at the, what's called the House Bill 1590 Business Plan. And then also the update to the Housing Affordability Task Force. And the Community Human Service Advisory Board members, after hearing that report, wanted to provide both council member culture and the entire city council with some recommendations for focus um, for the city during those regional meetings. And so they identified a number of bullet points. Uh, they're listed here on this slide and I was just going to briefly go through them. So you would have an opportunity to um, hear them and ask any questions regarding them. So the first one is, uh, again, just briefly, providing input on the upcoming regional meetings. And this is for the distribution of the point one percent sales tax that's going into effect. Um, and that money is supposed to be used for housing and mental health services. So the committee wanted to make sure that the members, the regional members of that committee looked at ensuring that the money was distributed equitably across the region. There's a sense that oftentimes this money that's collected gets focused on in South Snohomish County and along the I-5 corridor. And so making sure that the money that's raised in East County stays in East County and that that investment is remade in the community. Uh, the second one was to educate housing developers to include opportunities in East County. And this came out of a sense, again, that oftentimes developers know a lot about the I-5 corridor and a lot about uh, South Snohomish County, but may be less familiar with development opportunities in East Snohomish County. So wanting to ensure that there was some education for developers on opportunities in East County to do these types of developments. The next one is an emphasis on fair housing and outreach and assistance in multiple languages and integrating housing with surrounding communities. So this was a diversity equity and inclusion portion. So again, just making sure that if housing is going to be made available, affordable housing, low income housing, um, that there is an opportunity to ensure that that message out is as wide and as broad as possible. Uh, then there was a recommendation to ensure that the group returns, the regional group returned together and revisited the business plan um, at least every five years. So there's an opportunity to understand how the business plan is being implemented and how it's working overall and an opportunity to make adjustments as needed. And then finally, the last one uh, that was added to the list was to communicate those priorities or these priorities to county representatives. So um, county council member Stan Low and county executive Dave Summers as soon as possible to ensure that this information got to them and could be included and incorporated into the discussions of the group when they got together. So this, these recommendations were initially put together by a small group of Community Human Service Advisory Board members and then shared probably with the entire group and the entire group endorsed these and wanted to uh, need to bring them to city council. So council member culture, I don't know if you had anything else that you could add.
Uh, I believe that the um, the Community Human Services Advisory Board wanted to make specifically sure that council member and this is new for him and really that there were also other city people that mean, you know, that have done forwarded on him.
I think we were waiting uh, for this presentation tonight before we forwarded that on to see if there was anything else that council much wanted to have add to the list.
Perfect. So we just need to talk about, so we're all agreements that we can then get a.
Since it's a policy issue, we want to make sure that the council concurs with the policy that's been requested of the council mayor's. And so if this is something that the council supports, then it's helpful just uh, hearing if there isn't any objection, forwarding those comments onto the county council member and county executive. Is there any objection to doing that? Okay, any objection?
Excellent. We will prepare that letter then for the mayor pro temp to sign.
Um, yeah, or would all, would all seven councilmembers like to sign on to it? Well, also.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that direction.
Um, if it's okay with the council will indicate in the letter that uh, this is on the advice or something that affect our community versus by their words of it. It's that informs the decision. It's not just the council. Thank you. All right.
That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mayor's report, just, you know, Monroe's, we can stare in your packets. Um, I did meet with our representatives from the school district on Friday. Uh, they, um, both Kim Whitworth.
Yes.
And who's a um, acting superintendent for right now, but school district and also uh, board president of office will be coming to council on April 13th?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
It's like eighteen. There's eighteen.
To, to give the council a report on some of the things going on at the school district. Um, I'll be going to a school board meeting the day after, uh, also in mid-April, um, just to give an update on Imagine Monroe. Um, I also, uh, a week and a half, two weeks ago, gave an update to uh, the Rotary Club about Imagine Monroe. Um, and also attended Community Human Services Advisory Board on Thursday last week and also appreciated the conversation, uh, especially about the topic that Ms. Knight just brought up and
Juanas.
What's it?
Juanas.
Juanas. Oh, yeah, I attended Juanas and gave an update on Imagine Monroe as well. Um, I will be out of town for about a week and a half. So I will not be at next week's council meeting. So our mayor pro temp will be uh, presiding over that meeting to the extent that there needs to be uh, any sort of meeting management on that. So yeah, you're just touring. So I don't know what you're doing. You know, it's so you're trying to play, basically nobody falls in.
I'll bring it. I'll bring the live, waterways and the live jackets.
Um, I will be available. If anybody needs to talk about anything, I, I, I will be available. Just feel free to reach out if you have any questions. Uh, but I will be back any April for the, uh, for the next council meeting, for that, for that next meeting. Um, I do appreciate uh, the two community meetings I attended. I know that six of you have had an opportunity, actually all six of you have had an opportunity to tour the city hall, uh, campus and look at some of the needs that we have here uh, in, on the municipal campus. I know that there was a very thorough presentation by Ms. Hassert um, about the finances and about being able to do this with our means. Um, I appreciate all the conversation that everybody has had over this topic. Appreciate um, your support and also your discernment going forward to make certain reviewing material, want to make sure we're answering your questions. And uh, if you've got other ideas, we, we look forward to uh, looking those as well. So I, I thank you all very much while we're working on that. I don't have anything else at this time. Um, does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thanks. Um, we're going to go ahead and move on. Then we do have a need for an executive session this evening under item 11. Yes.
I am very sorry to interrupt. Um.
You would be Jeff Jolly.
Oh.
I saw Jeff Jolly and I was.
I wondered who I would.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just very quickly, the letter that you and council were just discussing, would it be okay to ask the council members if they would be uh, okay with staff using their digital signatures on that letter?
You okay with your little cross? Yep. I'm seeing thumbs up, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So we, we're going to go into an executive session. Again, we're working with technology now for tonight. Um, because there's only, because most everybody is here, everybody's here tonight, and it's only uh, Mr. Lell that will be in the meeting with us. We are going to attempt to stay in this room. Okay, now here's the deal. If you're watching online and if all of a sudden you lose us, please go ahead and log back in on the link. Um, there will be action to follow the executive session if nothing else to adjourn the meeting. And so, um, again, if something goes awry, I ask you, uh, there at home to go ahead and log back in on the link. Our hope is that that when we make this change, that uh, you will just see sort of a slide come up that indicates when we plan on coming back into session.
I, I won't be able to update that slide remotely.
Okay, so it'll just be.
Show that you're in executive session. I will verbally make announcements of extension.
Okay, so our clerk will go ahead and make um, spoken statements uh, as to extensions. And uh, then again, we will come back uh, into this current meeting uh, to finish up the meeting this evening. Uh, are there any questions from staff or anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, so just, just to be clear for council members, you are going to log out of this existing meeting and log into the executive session as if you were at home in order to ensure that Mr. Lell can join us. So if you're on, you're going to have to log into the executive session meeting.
Can't excuse that.
Nope, cannot use that.
All right. So we are now going into executive session for pricing of property person RCW 42.30, point 110 subsection 1 subsection little C for an initial seven minutes with potential extensions to occur. The time right now is eight twenty-four PM. We are in executive session.
For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, city clerk. The executive session has been extended three minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, city clerk. The executive session has been extended four minutes.
So, so tomorrow I'm going to.
Okay, now. Yeah, it's.
And hopefully they will contact you since you start at 5:30. And hopefully they will contact you.
Hey, we are now recording. Uh, council members, if I could encourage you to please return to your seats and vans. So I appreciate that at home. Uh, for people who are listening in, uh, we will start the meeting momentarily. We're just waiting for Ms. Knight. Uh, for people who are listening in, uh, we are uh, waiting for items. We will be starting right here. We're bringing up technology around here. Yeah, just when you, just when you have it all figured out, we're changing about you. So can you even create another one? Maybe, I can add on the other one and maybe aspirates. Or we could be missile command, aspirates and spacing.
There. I was gonna say Mario Kart. I didn't play NBA. Yes. Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. You guys need to go visit my arcade in a couple of minutes.
Sorry, everybody.
There she is.
We need to go to the timer and pop your, pop your issues.
So we are having, uh, we are currently reporting.
The good thing is, sorry, one happens. So, well, let's go back to the first one. So are you the one who looks people?
All right, uh, we are back in session. Go ahead, councilmember PM.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the city council modify the agenda for tonight's meeting by adding a final action. I am inserting the proposal letter of intent with Forza Development LLC for the purchase and sale of parcel number, a whole lot of numbers ending with 500, but to be specific, 27060100115500.
Culture second.
Okay, a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Culture. Um, any discussion on the motion? Same then we'll move to vote. All in favor? All of those extensions, motion passes, six zero. Ms. Knight, did you have anything further to add?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
Uh, I move that the city council authorize the mayor to execute on the city's behalf of proposed letter of intent with Forza Development LLC for the purchase and sale of parcel number 27060100115500. It's substantially the form presented to council. Together with such minor revisions, the mayor may deem necessary and appropriate.
Okay, our motion from Councilmember Campbell, second from Councilmember Hamper. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Lell and Ms. Knight, do you have anything further to add?
Not at this time.
Nothing from me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move to vote. All in favor? I, all opposed. Submissions, motion six zero. Thank you very much. Submissions, motion six zero. Thank you very much, everybody. We have no further business this evening. Unless there's objection, we'll consider our vote adjourned. Take a break. There are terms. Welcome back, everybody. There are terms.